I am not either, so I questioned them on like this because I didn't think of pushing for that in my original email. I said it was like if I wanted to hear about it right now, I'd just give you a letter of intent. What do you think? So I questioned.
I'm gonna go put it back.
Let's call a march meeting with the Decatur County Council. Yeah, Dr. Howell.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic are what is saints, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, here, by one review the minutes from the last meeting, February meeting. Any additions or corrections during discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Bill makes motion to approve. Melanie seconds, any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Urban.
Good morning, beautiful universe. Start off by giving you a piece of paper here, but I know you all can read, but I'm gonna read it out loud too. So what this is, I'm sure you all are aware of the Governor's Public Health Initiative. And one of the things that we started looking at when they first start talking about this is, what's this gonna mean for us? And what's it mean for Decatur County Health? I don't care what it does for anybody else, I'm only concerned with Decatur. So one of the things we looked at there was, who are we, what do we do? We had a very outdated mission statement. So our first priority was to draft an admission statement. And this was definitely a team effort, every single employee had input on this. And I'm really proud of it, so I want to read it if you don't mind. To promote positive health choices, prevent poor health outcomes and protect community wellness for all Decatur County residents. That's our overarching broad vision. And then how do we get there? So our mission is we promote the health, safety, well-being of residents through evidence-based practices. And I want to key in on that evidence base. We don't want to just go out and do stupid stuff just because if this passes, we're suddenly getting money. So we are using true data points to determine where we can be most effective to help improve the health, the population health of Decatur County. Educate and empower all residents of Decatur County to achieve optimal health. Build and maintain a strong organizational infrastructure for public health and a diverse and skilled workforce. Support a public health model with partnering agencies to deliver professional and responsive services to the community. Again, I want to stress the very last one there, the partnership aspect of this. Because we are not looking at trying to be all things to all people. There are some fantastic agencies in our county that are already doing great things for public health. We have established partnerships with the community health clinic, with Decatur County Memorial Hospital, the extension office, and we have other discussions scheduled for many other partners. And our goal there would be, if this goes through, and it's still pretty good, and we do receive additional funding, that we could offer some grants to some of these organizations to not just go through and hire 10 more people at the health department who are gonna sit around pulling the nuts. That's not the goal here, we want to be very responsible with this money that comes in. So what is the Governor's Public Health Initiative? So this was, it was, it was this through the Governor Holcomb. And one of the things that he noticed was some of the statistics on Indiana that aren't so great. I'll tell you the good ones first. On affordability, Indiana is sixth in the nation, that's awesome. Opportunity, we're seventh in the nation. K through 12th grade education, ninth in the nation. These are really good numbers to be proud of. We're 19th in the nation on the growth of the economy. And we're 25th in the nation on public safety. So on all of those measures, we're in top quartile, that's awesome. All these things really help attract business and economic development to Indiana and our county. The not so good with this, smoking and tobacco use, 45th in the nation. Obesity, 46th in the nation. Mental health, 43rd in the nation. Childhood immunizations, 41st in the nation. And what they're looking for here is to improve this last one, public health funding, 45th in the nation. Nationwide, public health funding is approximately $91 per capita. In Indiana, we average $55 per capita. And Decatur County is at $18.79 per capita. So, obviously, even to get close to the national average would require a huge increase in funds, and that's what this is. So what does this mean for us in Decatur County here? So in Indiana, let's start with you guys. The average lifespan in the United States is 70, life expectancy at birth, 78.5 years. In Indiana, it's 76.5 years. Now, two years doesn't sound like a lot, but when you look at population health, that's a huge discrepancy. And unfortunately, Decatur County is at 75. Sad thing on that is we've seen a decrease in like this expectancy. That's something none of you and none of, not me, has seen within our lifetimes. This is not driven by COVID, these numbers were pre-COVID. What they are from however is rising deaths from drug, alcohol, and suicide. We've seen the rising rates of adult and childhood obesity, tobacco use. Unfortunately, we saw an increase in tobacco use as well in the last two years. And then we, we do see some other things that are driving it. So what this is asking for is to bring the public health funding closer to the national average. We're still gonna be under the average, they're up to $88 compared to $91 national average. But this offers some tremendous opportunities for Decatur County. And one of the things we're really are focusing on, I've met with Economic Development Commission and the Chamber, and they're both very much in support of this because they know this will help lower employer costs. Employers need people to show up for work, they need them to be healthy. And they need their health insurance rates to go down, we all know how much health insurance costs. So if we can use the public health dollars for prevention and education and all of the things that we talk about in the mission statement, we will lower those costs for them. The latest study shows that for every dollar that's spent on public health has a return on investment of $11. I think that's pretty incredible right there. So those are gonna be in reduced medical costs. And those are, you know, obviously, we know how expensive healthcare is. This is not healthcare, this is more health prevention, it's way cheaper, saves us all a lot of money along. So I guess the bottom line, I'm gonna stop there, talked enough. You guys are probably as familiar with this as I am, but I guess I'm here mostly to ask for your support on this. This is an opt-in for the county, so you certainly have the, you can say no, you can say you don't want this. However, the money, if this passes, money's gonna be out there. And it's not like it's gonna lower our taxes. I said something to Deanna, that you know, this, I'm not gonna say this is free, we're all paying for it, we all know that. But the money's gonna get paid by us anyway, we need it as a county. And so I would ask for you to consider to, when this comes to you, to opt in. And I'll take any questions, you know.
I think commissioners agreed to opt-in, haven't they?
Commissioners are on board, yes.
So is this bill on the floor or is it?
It's actually, you're just gonna go to talk to him tomorrow about that, it's in the House, it's passed the Senate overwhelmingly.
Yeah, I think we heard about it at conference, they were talking about really chucking a lot of money at healthcare. Yeah, I'm, I think we ought to be involved when it comes through, I mean, I don't think you need to vote right now, but I think.
No, no.
You know, I just, yeah.
Education.
What have you got to do to get it going, Mike?
Great.
No problem, Eric, I don't have a problem with it. Because I think we need to partner with some other organizations in the county to help out what's going on.
We have some exciting initiatives already that, whether we get the money or not, a lot of these are gonna happen, so.
Because I didn't know that, the free health clinic, whatever it is, I took my rule, can only open two days a week, is that what you told me, Doc? I mean, you get sick more than two days a week, so.
How much are, how much can we expect to possibly get?
As far as the actual dollar amount too, so that would increase our per capita funding. I guess I should have explained a little bit about the financial, it requires no more investment from Decatur County. It does require maintaining the investment that you have. You do have to agree to not cut the funding for three years. So, yes, I guess there is a financial commitment, I didn't mean to gloss over that at all. That's part of why there may be, why some counties might want to opt out. Maybe they want to cut the health department's funding. But then it becomes, well, it already is, anyway, your question, I'll just get back to that. I was told that it should be around $600,000 for the health for the Decatur County. My map is a little bit different than that, but.
That's one time, you know?
Nope.
Well, that's up for debate right now, that's what I think.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm standing in the House is talking about. The plan is for this to be a five-year opt-in. You know, if, if it's only a five-year, it's still probably worth doing, we can accomplish a lot in five years. But I just hope they let us know that it's only five years so that we can plan accordingly. So if I have to hire people as grant, on grant basis, that's fine. And I can guarantee them a five-year contract, and that's fine. But if the renewal doesn't look good, you know, it's easier to attract better people, higher quality people, if we know this is gonna be a long-term thing.
What is our percentage? If they're thrown in $600,000, what do we have to?
It looks to be the same, our funding remains the same.
But I mean, is it percentage based or just?
It, it has to be a minimum of 20%, we're already, we would be there, we would be fine on that, so it wouldn't require any increase. There's only one county in the entire state that would have any kind of increase in their funding.
How's the state paying for this today, is that in the bill?
Well, I, I think there's a couple of ways, Deanna can probably speak to that better than I can, I really.
And I don't really know about funding either, but that's part of why, I think when I was up there testifying last week, part of the pushback is the expense, right? And the long-term of the expense, however, county council's position, state county council's position is that we want to see long-term funding so that programs aren't like that. So I don't know, I mean, state's been at a surplus.
I guess that's my concern, a lot of times the state will throw money at something.
Yeah.
In three years, they cut it off and they expect the county to pick it up.
Yeah, that's something that we addressed when we were up there as, as the county council, we addressed that. We also addressed that there would be no change of power connected to accepting this either. In other words, we're not gonna be indebted and have to follow the state health department. If we accept the money, we still have the power to utilize it in the best way that we see fit to.
The home rule is definitely a part of this initiative. I think originally, some of the early discussions, we're talking about some real, you know, state requirements. But how we spend this money is 100% political, which is 100%. And the total expense here is $200 million. And tech, I mean, from the state, first year will be, it'll start in July if this passes, so the first year will be $100 million, and then $200 million for the next.
They're sitting on a pretty good chunk of change right now, aren't they?
Yeah, if I look that, if that runs out, that's.
He would. They're sitting on more money than they need to be, oh, no, to put it that way. Any other questions for?
I got a question, how's everything working out, Washington school and parking adequate?
Yeah, actually, it's working out really well. We still are continuing to make some minor improvements, a little paint here, a little cleanup there, and a little rearranging, so. The space is, is really good, and it's suited as well. And then if you don't mind, I do have one more topic for quickly. We had, one of our full-time people has decided to go to part-time. So that has kind of created a void for us in the environmental division. It was our one full-time environmentalist, we had one full-time and one part-time. So she still is going to retain employment, but she's moving to part-time. My office person, I would like to move into that position, the full-time environmentalist position, which would be a pay increase for her, does not affect my budget in any way, shape, or form. So I don't know if I'm being appreciable or just let you know, or.
Person is already full-time.
Correct.
And you're putting her in full-time again?
Yes, it does increase her pay, her annual pay, we have established annual pay for that position.
But it just offsets.
Correct.
Correct. I probably wouldn't hurt to bring some paperwork on the next month.
Sure.
Let us look at it if that's okay, Sean.
Yeah.
Put it out there for everybody, so we know what's going on.
Yeah, we'll do it, alright.
Okay.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Mindy.
Good morning, so I need to ask if. There's two of them, one staple and then the one behind it. So this is regarding the part-time animal control officer position. We are proposing that, you know, since it's only $15 an hour for part-time, we're proposing that when the employee goes on call, that he would get, or they would get a payment of $2.25 an hour, and that would be from four to eight days. So it would be like $10 a day when they work. And that, when, or when they get called out for an emergency, it'd be just a payment of $25, a flat rate. If you need to call out, kind of modeled it after like how the coroner gets paid out for call-outs and stuff like that. So that would, I'd be asking for like $2,800 additional for the on-call. Met for the on-call, but then, like I said, the $25.
This is not in your budget, right?
No.
So you need a $2,800 additional into your animal control budget, budget line, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, that's where you guys wanted to put it. And then, and as you can see too, that, you know, I mean, between 21 and 22 year-to-date runs and stuff, that's like the one staple together, it's in the very back, just like modified some of that. Because it's such a weird news. So there was, in 2021, the combined runs was 127. Year-to-date incidents was 203. And in 2022, it was 250. And for the incidents and the runs was 157, so it is going up and getting this. And then when he's not there, you know, I will go ahead and do the runs and stuff like that. Or they, I'm sorry, I think of the past ACOs.
And this is kind of in lieu because a while back you got rid of the full-time guy, right?
Right.
And now we're kind of bumping it up again because salaries are going down.
Yeah, because we did that, yeah, to where I could get another full-time kennel tech, which I am very appreciative of. They stay very busy.
So you want to have your.
Right.
Animal control officer to $22,800, is what you're talking about.
Yeah, but then, then how we're, how do you guys feel about doing that flat rate of $25 per call-out? And we would have to be really strict, I mean, you know, they can't go out after hours chasing, running apart. It has to be a true emergency, and we'll have to, you know, so it's not taking any bait of that.
That's just for your part-time?
Oh, I can do comp comp and stuff, so it's okay. Half the time I'll even remember writing them, so.
If I understand that.
So looking increasing salary to, like, $2,800, is that what we're talking about there?
Add $2,800 to her, to her. What she did is go back and figure the call.
Well, that's where the, so then the runs, yeah. So like I said, the combined runs for 2021 was 127, and then last year was 250, so. And I mean, it's still kind of low this year so far.
The pay's, the pay's actually the same, you're just wanting to pay for.
A call. Yeah, just a flat rate.
So you're still gonna keep them at $15 an hour?
Yeah, it's just kind of something to make it a little bit sweeter, yeah, because $15 an hour.
Kind of pretty hard. Part-time $15 this year. Any other discussion? We need paperwork on that, Jan?
Yes, please.
You have to get paperwork on it.
When he submitted it, why?
Pardon, yeah.
So want to advertise it, vote at the next meeting, is that what we're gonna do?
I think it'll have to be advertised, $2,800 additional to.
Did you do an additional? No.
No, it's asking for.
But you'll have to advertise an additional.
You can do it, you don't have to create that.
Have the paperwork done and then we can. Go get your bag. Alright? Okay. Bring her back next month, will you?
Okay.
Have a go at it. Okay, before we move on to transfers, let's go ahead and for the council. Okay, transfers. Can I see those, now a copy of them? Any questions? Entertain a motion to approve the transfers.
I'll make that motion.
Deanna makes motion to approve transfers?
I'll second.
Melanie seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, additions. Okay, what we've got here is a request for $15,200. For, in Cooncap, what you want to make sure it's earmarked for a vehicle, is that correct?
Correct.
That's a sale.
No, is this for, for a vehicle or, but I'm reading a note in here, it says it's for equipment.
It is for equipment.
Equipment.
Janet, have you and I discussed to put it, go ahead and put it in the shares equipment line item? Have you and I discussed going ahead and putting it into the shares equipment line item? No, it's in QB, no, it has to stay there because that's where it was proceeded in.
Everybody understand that? Okay, it's $15,200. If I want to look at the paperwork. Bernie, you want to see it? Eric, take a look. Okay. Entertain a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion, Bill seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've got another one here for $6,000, I don't see what you. I don't see, there's no signature paper with it. You need a signature paper with this one, for $6,000?
I've got one left.
Okay, arch, arch. Okay, this is for $6,000 to earmark for a new car, new vehicle, correct?
Again, this is a sale of a vehicle in December, yes.
Any questions on that? I sold one to Acrit. Is that correct? Yes.
Sold it for how much?
Six, $6,000, anyone earmarked $6,000 for another new vehicle?
When you buy.
I'm thinking right?
Correct, for equipment actually, yes, it's gonna be a new car.
When will that be?
They've been ordered, I can't say when they're gonna be.
But it'll probably go towards equipment, right?
Correct.
Same as the others.
What's the cost of equipment?
10, 10.5, somewhere near.
That's where everybody.
Yes.
They can't take out what you traded, put in a new one?
Unfortunately not, because the way the laws change. Some, we are trying to sell it as quick as we can, but if we're in the jar yet, it's after the new equipment, because the law changes. We try to trade it off to somebody else, it may be, at the most points.
Sounds like somebody's got it figured out, don't they?
Yeah, they need to go over everything. But I want to look at this paperwork. Okay, entertain a motion to approve. Don't move, any make a motion? You second?
I'll second.
Bill seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Okay. Have a down one for a thousand and fifty dollars. And this amount was recep, received into vehicle, car used to be deputies' paper-taking vehicles. Live out of county, we asked this not be put into the sheriff's office line item to apply towards vehicle needing equipment. Another one for equipment, correct?
That's correct, yes.
So you've got deputies that are out of the county that they have to pay to drive?
Correct. We don't currently have anybody doing that. Just seeing that, um, so we're just requesting to move it to the other funds so we can actually move it.
Everybody understand that? Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Bill makes a motion. Can I second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I think that takes care of all that, is that all them girls? Is it? Raising tax levy on Coombe Cap and Coombe Bridge. Ruben?
Yes.
Did you figure out anything on Coombe Bridge?
Well, I mean, other than what I talked about last time I was here, I mean, there's nothing really to figure out other than do you want to do it or not, I mean, there's that'll say beyond the numbers I gave you, you know what I mean? As far as your general funds, it's gonna hurt one of your civil levy funds or multiple of it, depending how you want to break that out. It ultimately comes down to I can't make that decision, so I don't have a suggestion or the other, and my papers are sitting on my printer that I printed myself yesterday. Used to have those numbers I gave you last month, I think I might have.
Yeah, I got one here on Coombe Bridge.
Yeah, I mean, I still don't know the figures, that's why I did, but uh I mean, there's not really much way for me to say other than arguing the figures. I said, just whatever, whatever revenue that generates that ninety thousand, six hundred dollars has to come away from the general health or something.
You said it was gonna run out and, uh, if we don't raise it, Coombe Bridge.
I think. What did he, what was his estimate on that, Mark? Didn't you, didn't Todd say so?
That Todd, I have numbers.
Yeah, Todd had, I think, four or five years.
Four or five years.
In five years, we're gonna, is when that bridge west of Burning will be, hit the list and our pa, our match is a couple million bucks. I think that's what the fear was.
So do we need this now to build it up until then? Is that what the deal is?
Yeah. And it's ninety thousand, can we?
It's, it's not gonna do the job, but it's, it's, it's a help. That's where it was five or six years ago, maybe, or is that when it was changed?
Yeah, when he came in, when he came in for the, for the uh wheel tax, he said you can take some away from my Coombe Bridge to make it.
Yeah, that was a trade-off.
A trade-off on that, when we raised the wheel tax to fifty bucks, and they said, trade-off for us.
Which the discussion back then was ideally someday to put it back. And that was part of the discussion, but it just never had happened, and that's a consideration. With the, I mean, you guys know what, the, the health insurance exploded three years ago or something, which we kind of, you had gotten it back, we were pretty comfortable safe, but all of a sudden we have this massive oven or insurance bill and they were able to uh comfortably do that again.
Can we spread this out? Kind of let everybody lose just a little bit?
Yeah.
I mean, not hurt us real bad?
Right, you can, you can, which that's, you know, over the last two or three years, we've looked every year to adjust a little bit between, like I mentioned, I say health and, and park and so forth and reassessments. We've adjusted those a little bit every year anyways, based on that year's budget, so they can always, they can be split amongst the four or five different funds.
Is that, is that the health connected to public health?
This is the health department tax rate within the general fund.
Tax rate.
So there might not be an opportunity to adjust that one if we take the funding from SB four potentially? We don't know that yet till it passes.
Well, that's the reason I was saying, it's, it's a ninety thousand increase, there's, what is it, five or six hundred? So we divide that by six. We can look at it. Little ten thousand piece.
Yeah, it's not a massive number, I mean, not, I mean, nine thousand dollars is a lot, is a lot of money, that's gonna put that down, but in a, in the bigger terms of the total levy amongst all the funds, it's not a massive number. It's just, I mean, I want to make sure, it's got them off of something.
Everybody understand that? Any more discussion, Ruben? We need drops, paperwork, vote on it down the road?
Yeah, advertising.
Has to be done by May, right?
Has to be turned in by May. They had to, they had to vote on it in the second advertisement before May thirty-first, then we can submit everything, the, the um or monsters can be finished after May thirty-first.
Okay, because DLGF wants a copy of the proposal or the ordinance before it's passed, so they can reveal it if they make one, which is, at least that's the way I was reading.
They used to do it on lift regulations, but not on Q bonds. I have all that, all that ordinance, that's easy to do.
Perfect.
Yeah, wait, that's no problem, we have them. You get business, when you're a councilman, that's really special.
You want to do it next council, maybe, take one up?
Yeah.
Okay. Kind of, if you can, kind of fair up where the loss is gonna be a little bit, you know what I mean?
Yeah, Bill, I want some budget, you know, once we start getting budget figures in for twenty-four, then we'll start, it makes more sense then, for you.
Okay.
Do you want them a little earlier? Do you need them earlier than?
July, I mean, when we usually do them, but.
Any other questions on that? Okay, reducing special purpose tax, do we want to follow through that on half percent?
Ruben, did you get a chance to take a look at if there were other things we could be funding with that special purpose tax that we're not?
I have, I don't, I don't see much more than what you're doing. You pretty well invented jail operations mostly in it.
That's kind of the way it was written.
Yeah, that was, that was the intent of it.
I was on here, the lawyers explained that's because it got attached to another bill that had to be specific to what it did. Couldn't be just put a tax on it. That's why you understand it early.
Yeah. The thing we've got to be careful about is
Yeah.
I'd like to see a tax decrease. But if two years down the road, we see that we have to increase it back, everybody, they don't pay a whole lot of attention if we decrease tax, rather than go back raising it again.
Well, and we, you refigured those figures per household, right, on what that drop in tax would be?
Hold on, I can see.
Trying to find it, I can't.
Yeah, let's, here's what he figured here, we went down to point six oh.
No, it, it was less than that, he went back and refigured it.
We're what, point six five now, right?
Yeah, we went down a half percent and looked at it again in a year. It's, according to his figures, the surplus would still be a little rate a hundred thousand with a three hundred fifty thousand dollar decrease.
So how much per household is that?
So I'm trying to find, I know, I thought.
Yes, I don't think I printed that.
It was like eleven dollars a household or something like that, it was, it was pretty low.
Was a lot.
Yes.
Yeah, it was surprising, look.
That's my idea.
That's like tax on your photo bill.
Because I don't have that in my, uh, paperwork I gave you.
An annual increase. Reduction of sixty-five dollars a year, maybe.
Did I email you that right after that last council meeting?
It's February twenty-first, is what I'm looking at.
That's different, sixty-five, that's another word to it, man. If it's sixty-five dollars a household, it's worth doing, I think.
Well, I'm just, yeah, I'm just trying.
It was the Coombe Cap that was a raise of eleven dollars, is what that was.
It's half percent, what else?
Yeah, it would reduce household taxes by sixty-five dollars a year.
If you look at that, look at the special purpose tax, it's pretty healthy.
Yeah.
In here, that's the reason I was, you know.
I'd be in favor of that.
Our intention was to carry over about a half million a year, then the eleventh year, go about four million, that just saying, reduce that twenty-year bond down to fifteen, that saves a lot of money for them. And then the special purpose tax can cut back down to operations and, you know, whatever, and maintenance on the jail.
So are there any unforeseen or upcoming large expenses that we should consider when making that decision that this for special purpose tax might be used for, would be the other question, I think.
Well, there is one expense that I'm going to be presenting this for a water softening. It's around two five thousand.
But we were still safe when we were a half percent, I thought we could took a whole percent and still, if I remember.
I was just looking at the increments, maybe looking at half percent this year, see where it was next year, another half percent, that would be a five, my thought.
I'd go with that.
We kind of, we kind of, because whenever we raised it to point six five, we told them whenever we thought it was healthy enough, we would start decreasing a little bit.
Right.
We had a little pushback.
We need a motion for that.
And I think we have to advertise it again?
You'll have to do that at another public meeting. Well, you do a reduction in the public, I don't know.
That's an internal question, well, I read, any change, but.
Right, I mean, I think it is, and that is not under a time constraint, like any Q bond thing, it's just, it just matter, when you adopt it, it matters when it is expected to the taxpayer. If you guys want like a motion to start process, that's no problem, we can.
I'll second.
Bernie makes a motion to start process, Bill seconds, and that from point six five to point six oh, correct?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, Coombe Cap. You have it here? It's on the list too. Ruben pushes to raise Coombe Cap to the max.
Let's put that up.
We'll put that in the paper.
Yeah, I just feel like I'm not doing my job if I don't
Yeah, I know you are.
Suggest it.
Coombe Cap right now, the rate's point oh one four nine.
That's, and the numbers that we were talking about then was the decrease everybody will see from the income tax change is larger than the tax increase they'll see from raising Coombe Cap. Now, that's, I mean, that is relative to certain types of properties and so forth, man, that's all, I mean, it's, you can't say every person's gonna see a tax decrease because different homes, values, and farmland and so forth, but, you know, when you come down to average properties versus average incomes, the average the average home will see a slight decrease in taxes with the Coombe Cap increase versus the lift decrease.
What are we looking at, looking at? He was suggesting point zero three three three, which is max, which would increase revenue by three hundred and thirty-three thousand, which Coombe Cap has used a whole lot, correct?
Yeah, it's equipment.
Janet, equipment, cars.
Everything, so.
We've increased that as much, that's our time. I mean, increased what we put on it.
We've increased what we spend on, and it doesn't have to be the max, I mean, if you want to go up you know, point two four nine or something like that, that's.
Well, again, the estimate is it will cost eleven dollars and eighty-four cents per household. If you go, if you go to the max.
If you go to the max?
Yeah.
So, if you want to start that process, we can do both same time, can't we? So, you want to go to max?
Well, we, we funded everything up to this point through there. We've got to keep thinking about what's coming down the road because everything, the cost of everything's gonna continue to go up. You know, we're at point one four nine now, and we're able to fund everything that we're doing at the moment.
Now, this, yeah, it goes from current property tax rate, then two hundred and seventy thousand, it'll raise to six hundred and three thousand, if we go to max.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm not sure, my paper is maxing that out.
Maybe do it halfway?
Maybe go halfway.
Point oh two, I mean, I'll go point, point oh two four nine or?
Yeah, I would, I would feel better about that than taking all the way we got.
Did you get that? Go to point oh two four nine and see where that goes?
Yeah, that's fine, um, what I'm curious is, I'm looking at, what's the cash balance on Coombe Cap in the last five years?
Well, we've got that, the sale of the health building in there, excuse it, excuse me.
So if we pull, if we pull that cash out, what's the cash balance then?
Thing is about three hundred and sixty-four thousand four fifty-two right now.
Right now, is what you say? What'd you say it was?
Right now, the Coombe Cap is at nine hundred and three sixty-four, four fifty-two, but if you pull up the million from there, it's eight hundred thousand. Or, or three back up, uh, you know, the health building in this, excuse me, ten minutes. Jail project back to special purpose, so.
So you can take out the, if you take out the building, it's about three hundred. So it's down, it's down over three hundred thousand dollars since eighteen, since January one of nineteen. It's down three hundred thousand dollars minus that save. So, it's been funded things, I mean, we've been talking about this for a couple of years now, but it's been funded things out of the cash balance, not out of the revenue stream of Coombe Cap's health, that's why I keep on talking about Coombe Cap.
Well, that, yeah, the old part of the courthouse is, it's getting old, there's things going wrong, so.
So, I don't know, if you're, can you advise?
Some issues that we, you know, H V H C, I know are the set aside, I think, but I don't know what it's gonna cost, maybe.
If you make it even number, point oh two five. You don't want to go four nine. Because that can be used for anything, correct?
Apple classes.
Any, any legal thing that.
The Hill Washington School was another, I don't.
Oh two, oh two five increases your revenue by one eighty-three.
That's about half.
Yeah, getting ready to spend money up.
And that's like less than seven dollars per house, about six fifty per household.
Okay. Is that okay? Yeah, we guys more at once, can we do it all at the same time?
One, one thing, one thing you might discuss between now and then, between, maybe, because I can make that paperwork pretty quick. We just had to have it advertised ten days before the meeting, so there's a couple that talk about this, is talking about Coombe Bridge, even if the change is gonna be a little short, figure out how much money do you need, you want to max this thing out for three years? And, you know, dedicate a hundred a year for that bridge, for example, and then when you get down to the rate, well, hey, we're there, you don't have to do anything to reduce it, you just say, we. you don't have to do anything to reduce it, other than say, we just, we're going to adopt this year point two five or something. That's possible too. And you can also, what you could do is you could advertise and adopt point oh three three in your meeting to get that part done, and at budget time, you can say, hey, now let's just adopt it at point oh two five, or oh two six, or oh two three, or whatever. Whatever you adopt is going to set the rate. Basically, what this is doing is saying, we're going to, we are reestablishing the rate to this number, but if you adopt a lower, that's what we did when we did the Q bridge a few years ago, there was no paperwork on it, we just adopted a lower rate, and that then sets the new ceiling to that rate.
Okay.
And these numbers also are never, are not going to dilute anymore either, so once you establish this number, it's going to stay at that number, it's not going to drop anymore, you can increase it once, and, so once you increase it now, it's going to stay at that number regardless of what the A V does. Which is nice, but then if you adopt it at oh two five, you can increase it in the future year.
Okay.
Yeah, because your Q bridge right now is sitting at four hundred and sixty eight thousand, that's not a lot.
No.
So you could use some of this for that, you need, and I need to discuss it with the ministers and Todd and these guys, see how much, what do we need to start putting together?
How are you thinking of being advertised?
Why don't we do, I would suggest, let's run the paperwork and make that resolution to oh three three three, and then have more discussions between you all, figure out the needs, and then at budget time, we can adopt it, whatever needs to be adopted.
Okay. That works.
So basically, what it is, is they're going to approve that right after you do this, and you guys can adopt it now.
You can adopt it longer. Everybody understand that? Got it? Need a motion, or just, are we okay?
No, I think.
We're okay?
You're not really approving anything other than you're going to start the process.
Okay, have I got that? Okay, food and beverage tax.
Well, we're talking about taxes. So, this is kind of, I've got my aquatic center committee hat on here. I was contacted by Jeff Thompson, the chairman of Ways and Means, on Wednesday afternoon that they are moving forward to put that on the state budget as legislation to give us the opportunity to do a food and beverage tax at one percent. He asked for a resolution and or information that would support the opportunity for us to do that. I struggled, we had both the commissioner's attorney and the council attorney on spring break last week. So Brian Robbins, who also was on vacation, helped to form the temporary version that I read yesterday morning at the commissioner's meeting. And then our lawyer, Chris Tebby, took a look at this yesterday afternoon. I wrote it in the form of a resolution. I questioned whether a resolution was the best way to do that, and he said, yes, it was fine to do a resolution. So this has been run through Chris Tebby, the county council attorney, and I'm just going to read it out loud here for the public's sake as to what we're sending. Again, all this is, is showing that we are in support of having the opportunity to do a food and beverage tax. We still will be able to have more debate on that and how we want to utilize that, once it actually is part of legislation. The part that we're at risk if we don't make sure that we try to take an opportunity of getting this into the legislation is it will probably be at least two more years because they're attaching it to the budget, budget is every other year. So if we don't do it this year, we'll have to wait till twenty twenty five. The matching funds that we already have set aside from the ready grant and from the ARPA grant has to be committed by the end of twenty twenty four, so we kind of will miss our opportunity to connect those two together if we don't try to do it this year. So I'm going to read the resolution. "A joint resolution of the county council of Decatur County, Indiana, and the Decatur County, Indiana commissioners. This document is to serve as a formal letter of intent stating Decatur County's desire to begin the process allowed by state law for the implementation of a food and beverage tax. We see this action as an attempt to take full advantage of the community's assets and resources, particularly its strategic location between two metropolitan areas on Interstate seventy four toward funding quality of life projects that will enhance the lives of current residents and serve to attract newcomers to our area. Our intent is based on research conducted by a committee formed to explore funding sources to address the numerous investments needed in our parks, fairgrounds, and aquatic facilities. Amongst other data, the committee highlighted the following information. Fifty-two percent of the food and beverage tax is likely to be paid by non-Decatur County residents. As example, this includes our interstate truck stop visitors, of which over ninety-five percent are passing through the area. The results of a survey of over seventy businesses conducted through the Greensburg-Decatur County Chamber of Commerce showed a majority supported a food and beverage tax for the community if the funds were designated toward the improvement development of quality of life infrastructure. An estimated three hundred to four hundred thousand can be raised through a food and beverage tax for Decatur County, providing a much-needed revenue stream for larger long-term investments in quality of life projects. In the discussion surrounding the development of this funding source, the primary project to be addressed is the deteriorating state of the community's public pool. At over sixty years old, the staple of the community is beyond repair and requires replacement, and as a key attraction in the county, the community, city park, and fairgrounds area, its enhanced redesign has already garnered enthusiastic support amongst the general public and will serve as a regional draw. This project, combined with the reimagining of our fairground properties, will require considerable investment, and we feel such expenditures easily fall within the designated uses set by Indiana Code for revenue collected from a food and beverage tax. In accordance with this letter of intent, we ask that the general assembly allow for the establishment of a food and beverage tax for Decatur County. We feel it will serve as an important funding stream toward capitalizing on the community's strength and stand as essential for the further growth of our county."
I've got a question.
Yep.
Food and beverage tax, who are they going to tax, are they going to tax the restaurants, they go tax liquor stores, they go tax the grocery stores?
Food and beverage tax is for prepared food and beverages, so not groceries, not liquor stores, anything that would be, now, if you would go maybe to a deli at the grocery store to get a lunch sandwich, that is prepared food. But otherwise, it's just prepared food and beverage.
How's that going to be collected?
It's, it's collected by the
By the person?
Yes, and that's why.
Are they, are they given any, paid any fee for collecting this tax?
Um, I don't know that, I mean, you can ask, but again, we're not passing that right now, we're just passing an opportunity to do that. So we can actually get those answers, ask, you know, before we actually pass the ordinance that would do that. The reason that the Aquatic Center Committee sent the survey out to chamber businesses was to send that to some of those businesses that would be affected by the food and beverage tax.
About everything? The only problem I have is I don't think the process was handed right. This should have been brought up about November, December, and council.
Well, it wasn't even, it wasn't even.
Brought in, brought in the fold of doing this because I know when we went through the special purpose tax for the jail, we, we spent two or three months, and this should have been, it should have been in public a long time ago, not just now, it should have been.
Again, we're not voting on it, so, but it is in public now, we're voting on it once it actually is legislation. The legislators weren't even in session in early, in November or December.
But it was a thought put together in November, December? That's why, that's why.
And that's why we've been jumping through it, because of the timing that is affected there, we haven't had an opportunity.
I didn't, I didn't think the process was handled correctly. That's my opinion.
That's fine.
You know, I just don't feel like I was.
Well, it's like Jen said, we're not voting on it, we just got to get it passed to them so if we can build on, we want to do it, it's not the, or I'm saying we want to do it right now, we have to get this done to have the ability to say we're right.
Well, this is just a sport.
That's just, exactly, that's all it is.
We don't have an opportunity at all if they don't pass.
Yeah.
Then we can have the discussion, ask the questions, and make sure it's what we want.
Is this a statewide thing?
No, this is Decatur County.
Was I reading where they're going to build two to sunset this in two thousand and forty five?
Potentially, and actually, we would, I mean, we would have a time limit, we were thinking in ten to twenty years anyway, depending on, once we looked into the numbers, to see what the numbers worked out to be. It wasn't, we weren't looking to make it a long-term process necessarily anyway.
The county will have full control, the city's not going to have anything to do with it.
But it goes through the state and comes back to us, correct?
I think so, yeah.
Boy, that's, I have a problem, anything going through this thing, coming down, you can't get around that unfortunately.
Who sets the?
I still don't think the process was handed right, but we'll take a vote, anybody wants?
Do you have a question here?
Who sets the budget? I mean, who's, who has authority to spin this?
We would, we would appropriate, the county would. I mean, we have to, they will designate at the state level, like what we said here, quality of life projects, it has to be used for a specific purpose, but yes.
Who decides that, is there a committee, a, just the council?
Yeah, council.
It'll, well, it's written in the legislature, so we'll have to make sure that whatever we use it for is whatever they write it for, which would be quality of life projects.
But she's asking, the council has control of it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so you'll set a budget, just like when we get, start the budgets in August of twenty four.
Yeah, probably, we probably have a separate line item, I would guess, for that.
Separate budget, it should be a separate line.
Yeah.
Why does it have to be designated for quality of life only? Why can't it be used for other things?
Because that's one of, I mean, they have a limited amount of opportunity that you can use a food and beverage tax for. Like, remember in Newcastle, they had it for the Indiana Basketball Hall of Fame, it's something that they want it to be specific uses for. It's not something you can just use in a general line.
Any other questions?
Do you need a motion on this?
I think we do, a resolution, yeah.
Definitely.
What resolution number would it be, Jen?
Ah, dash three.
Dash three? I got it. Okay. I'll make that motion. Kenny makes a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty three dash three. Melanie seconds, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. No.
Ernie? Anyone want to pose? I'm abstaining. Put abstention on there.
Presenting three.
Pardon?
Four, yes.
And it's also the email to Ashley.
Okay, I think that covers our agenda. Anybody have anything else for us? Questions, concerns? Now's time to yell, if you want to yell.
I would like to announce, I'm going to enter the caucus with the ministers, raise. I'm going to enter the caucus for the commissioner, raise.
What is that, is that an extension?
Yes, that's true.
Okay.
Make a motion, reserve.
I'm going to make a motion, Kenny do a adjourn. Melanie seconds, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, I think we have a executive session after this. You guys want to go to bathroom, we'll check out fifteen minutes, we'll turn it down. We will start the exec. All right? Can you light a mark? Okay.
You're safe, I mean, that.
Good.
I thought beer, I yelled.
Morning, how are you doing?
Yeah, good.
I'm ready to get. You just.